The regular meeting of the Board of Education is called to order. Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call?
Good evening, Board members. Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
Present.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Present.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs.
Present.
Mr. Lee Kirkman.
Present.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger.
Present.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Present.
Ms. Lori Spees.
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask the Board if there are any amendments to the current agenda.
I have two.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we modify the agenda to include discussion about the ESS contract and to include a personnel item.
Okay. I have a motion to include a discussion about the ESS contract and a personnel item. Do I have a second for that?
I have a question. Is the personnel item something that requires closed session? That's already on the agenda, correct?
My second.
I have a second. Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
And this is for the adoption of the agenda. Ms. Jennifer Dacey.
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs.
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kirkman.
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger.
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason.
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees.
Yes.
Motion passes.
I would like to call Amy Davis from District 5 to lead our safety procedures.
In the event of a fire emergency, we split the room in half. The right side of the room will exit out of the door to my left. The left side of the room will exit out of the door to my right. Those moving to my right will go out into the parking lot towards the bagel shop. Those moving to my left will go out to the Digital Sign Your Glen Burnie Street and get as far away from the building until the fire department comes and clears the building.
Thank you. At this time, we'd like to just recognize any of our elected officials who are in the room, any of our special guests. I see Ms. Godwin, our Principal of the Year. I don't know if I see Ms. Simmons. There she is, our Teacher of the Year. I see a lot of principal faces tonight. And if we have retired educators, we're glad to have you here with us tonight as well. We have several students from New Bern High School here tonight observing our board meeting, and we're really glad to have you all here with us, too. I'll call on our Board Attorney, Mr. Gatchell, to offer an invocation.
Board members, if you'll please pray with me. Holy and merciful God, you desire that we return to you with our whole hearts. May we set aside all that draws us away from you and bow before your throne of grace. You call us to fast, to deny ourselves the very things that overwhelm our appetites and satiate our desires. May we instead strive to quench our need for you and find satisfaction in your provision. You ask us to humble ourselves, even to the point that we grieve what we have become and regret what we have done. May we repent of our prideful attitudes, confess our transgressions, and discover what you want us to be and how you want us to serve. You, oh Lord, are gracious and compassionate, slow to anger, and abounding in steadfast love. Relent, oh God, from the judgment we are due. Accept our contrition. We rend our hearts. Spare your people and take pity on us and restore us to the joy of your salvation. In your benevolent name, we offer our prayer. Amen.
This time, I will call upon Board Member Darlene Gibbs from District 7 to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand and join us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I will call on Vice Chairman Patty Mason to provide us a summary of the presentations and information that was presented at the work session on Tuesday, March 18.
I encourage everyone to go listen to the video on YouTube. I'm going to skim through this kind of fast so we can get through the agenda tonight. It started with the exciting opportunity to welcome Mr. Lee Kirkman to the Board to fill the vacant 2 District 2 seat. He's an upstanding man in the community. He brings a wealth of knowledge and experience and education to the Board. He brings a wealth of business experience, and he knows how to make tough decisions professionally, and it's an honor to have him on the Board, and it's an honor to serve with him. West Craven High School was approved for an Eagle donation. It was impressive. Students raised over 33K for that. The superintendent's report included a lot of exciting... Excuse me, I'm sorry. Opportunities, the successful Read Across America event on 3 March, the kindergarten registration that's occurring on 9 April, the awesome student art exhibit at the History Center showing off much of the talent. Exciting news that 10 out of 24 students selected for the Governor's School were from Craven County. And Craven was selected for at least one Blue Ribbon Award in Public Relations on the 11th of April. And hats off to Ms. Jennifer Wagner for having us be able to do that. Dr. Botwell presented data on ADM demonstrating that Craven County is achieving its vision of being the school of choice within the county. Her data showed there's opportunity for more growth, but we are achieving the thing. The Board approved a one-time salary bonus to teachers and instructional staff that is a graduated tiered amount based on the number of years experienced. It does not... And Dr. Miller emphasized it doesn't affect local pay. There was an ESS contract update, and that's the contract that pays for our subs, and it's demonstrating a higher fill rate than we've done before. The Board approved a calendar update to account for the extra snow days, to ensure our teachers had the right number of days, workdays. The Board approved EOC and EOG testing options. This year, the testing is reverted back to the pre-COVID days where remediation will occur during the regular school year, and it's coordinated with the other assessments that are ongoing, so our students will all have the opportunity to participate. Two FFA field trips were approved, one for New Bern High and one for Havelock High. Dr. Botwell provided an update on performance and what the early check-in assessment returns are showing. We're now using the DPI check-in assessments, which means it should be a good predictor of what the end-of-year testing results will be. And the check-ins are done in October, January, and March. And while there was an expected slightly dip, it was encouraging news, and it also shows that the new math curriculum that's being implemented this year appears to be having some success. Dr. Gatchell provided an update on English as a second language. They're having a very good success rate, and that's a program that is operating very well. Dr. Sellers provided an update on the citizen diploma endorsement that is available to students. It doesn't guarantee citizenship, but it demonstrates proficiency, and you can get a certificate on your graduation certificate. Two policies removed from first reading to second reading, remote participation and tuition for discretionary admission, and the second reading of the policy for sex offenders was completed, and that is on the consent agenda for tonight. The Board had many celebrations. Mr. Kirkman appreciated the opportunity to serve. Amy Davis, it was enthusiastic about the Grover Seafield 7th and 8th grade band's superior performance. They did well. The Brinson Math Night that has students interested in math application and talking about it. The New Bern High School men's volleyball team was just established. And the student representatives that participated in the meeting were outstanding and gave really good questions, and they were thanked very well. Ms. Dacey applauded Mr. Kirkman, who's enthused about his serving. She was excited about the ability to participate in Read Across America as well. And she... Highlights were she and Mrs. Mack, the head nurse, had the ability to participate in Recovery Alliance, and they're going to be bringing forth good things that are coming out of that. She's excited that the Commissioners will be funding the Tony Hoffman Day event for another two years. Students are responding positively. Ms. Kissinger said she's pleased with Mr. Kirkman and is looking forward to serving with him, and she's impressed with high schools at the Havelock School Bands and that they are showing great improvement each year. She can graduate at Tucker Creek PSA that is going to state next month, and she's confident they're going to do very well. Ms. Spees welcomed Mr. Kirkman and is excited that he's a fellow FFA member and said she was aware... She was pleased about the Read Across America with the New Bern Police Officers, five of them participated, and participants of Pi, and she was pleased with all the presentations that were given. And that's it.
Thank you. We are going to receive public input. Before I ask Vice Chairman Mason to start with the list of those folks who would like to speak tonight, I'd just like to remind everyone, first, I'd like to thank everyone for coming out. Even if you're not going to give public input tonight, thank you for coming out and taking an interest in our school district. Speakers will all address the Board from that podium right there, and please begin your remarks by stating your name and your address. Speakers are expected to be civil in their language and presentation. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. However, the Board, in accordance with our policy, will include a discussion of public input on the agenda, and at that time, we might discuss the issues that have been raised in public comment. We might not, but also, according to our policy, we will make a response to the public input. So we are listening to you. The Board of Education is here to listen to those who have signed up, and our speakers will be called upon one at a time, and you have up to five minutes of speaking. If you're still speaking when the alarm sounds, we're going to have to buzzer you down. So the decorum for our public meeting is to be polite and civil and respectful. I ask that your comments to the Board be focused, polite, do not include any personal attacks or name-calling, and to be directed to the Board. Please refrain from applause and other outbursts, and we appreciate you all for being here and those that are going to speak to us tonight. And we're ready to get started. Ms. Mason?
Madam Chair, there's 17 people. So we'll start with Ms. Molly Strawbridge, and I apologize if I mispronounce any names.
Okay. Hi, good afternoon, good evening. I'm Molly Strawbridge. I am a 4th grade teacher at Bangor Elementary School. This is my 15th year teaching for Craven County Schools, all of which were in 4th grade. I'm here tonight to advocate for the continued presence of our instructional coaches, especially Bangor's Coach Gray Tipton. Instructional coaches benefit our schools in a multitude of ways. They support our teachers and the students. Gray Tipton has provided us with hands-on support for our teachers. She helps us to refine our instructional strategies and analyze student data, not to mention implement our best practices. Research consistently shows that when teachers are well-supported, students will achieve and they will improve. Mrs. Tipton provides exemplar lessons for our beginning teachers, and she makes it a point to model those lessons so that they all can grow professionally. Even though my 4th grade team is composed of veteran teachers, she has really helped us change the way that we are teaching in order to enhance our student learning. Our team would honestly be lost without her. Instructional coaches also keep up with educational changes. As you guys all know, education is constantly evolving. New standards, new teaching methods, and new assessments require ongoing professional learning. Instructional coaches ensure that teachers have the latest tools and strategies for us to adapt and to excel. Our coaches provide personalized professional development. Unlike one-size-fits-all workshops, our coaches provide targeted, in-the-moment support that meets teacher-specific needs. Mrs. Tipton can walk into any classroom at our school. She can take over our lessons and model ways to improve all of our teaching methods. Instructional coaches help teachers analyze our student performance data. They help us to identify gaps and to adjust our instruction accordingly. This results in more effective teaching and better student outcomes. Finally, our coaches help us keep retaining and strengthening the teachers we have. With our growing teacher shortages, we need to invest in those that we have. Our coaches provide mentorship, reduce teacher burnout, and create a culture of continuous improvement. And this makes our school stronger. Eliminating these positions would mean taking away critical support that directly impacts teachers and students. If we want to see continued growth and achievement, we must ensure that educators have guidance and the resources that they need. I urge you to prioritize our instructional coaches. They are not an extra expense. They are an investment in the success of our students and in our schools, even if that means reducing the number of instructional coaches for next school year. I appreciate your consideration, and I hope that you will recognize the value instructional coaches bring to Craven County Schools. Thank you.
Ms. Sarah Weems?
Okay. My name is Sarah Weems. I am also a 4th grade teacher at A.H. Bangor Elementary School. This is my 12th year teaching and my 10th year in Craven County Schools, all of which I've taught anywhere from 3rd to 5th grade. I'm here tonight to advocate for the positions of our instructional coaches as well. And education is not one-size-fits-all. Each student learns differently and faces many unique challenges, and students need that personalized guidance in order to succeed. This is a huge part of where our instructional coaches come in. Instructional coaches are not just tutors or mentors. They help us to collaborate and help teachers to thrive, as well as students to thrive academically and gain confidence that they need to succeed. Instructional coaches work with teachers to ensure that all students, regardless of their learning styles and/or backgrounds, have the tools that they need to succeed as well. They help teachers bridge the gap with student focus, time management, and self-motivation for those that might need that. The benefits, though, do not stop with the students. There are many benefits for the teachers as well. They help us to really lighten the load for teachers and teacher assistants. They help us to reinforce those lessons as well. They provide one-on-one or team support when needed. They help our teachers plan together and to create cross-curricular learning units, which has been really beneficial, particularly in our school this school year and previous school years as well. They also help facilitate data analysis meetings and help us pinpoint areas of instructional growth to push and grow our student deficits. They push educators to use data in order to find the areas that need support based on benchmark assessment data and even classroom data. On a personal note, at Bangor, Gray Tipton has been a huge influence for our teachers in a positive way. Personally, Molly and I this year have taken on national boards, and she has been a huge support system for us with that as well, not only supporting us with anything that we need, but encouraging us to teach at a higher standard and to better ourselves as educators. Even at Bangor, we only have her every other week for one day. She is still able to make a huge influence in our classrooms, which is just such a blessing. Instructional coaches are not a luxury, they are a necessity, helping all teachers, from first-year teachers to seasoned veteran teachers. I'm here tonight to ask you all to reconsider prioritizing our instructional coaches in our schools, even if that means that we cannot have all of them that we currently have. They are an essential part of both teacher and student success. Thank you so much.
I'm having a hard time. Ranera Wallace? How do I pronounce? Ranita? Yeah, sorry.
Greetings, esteemed Board members. My name is Dr. Raneka Wallace. I'm the Principal of J.T. Barber Elementary School, as well as the President of Craven County Schools Principals and Assistant Principals Association. First and foremost, I want to commend your dedication and tireless efforts in supporting our schools and our students. Your leadership and commitment to educational excellence have played a crucial role in the progress we've seen today, and we deeply appreciate your service to our community. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you this evening on behalf of the Craven County Schools Principals and Assistant Principal Association about an issue critical to the continued success of students in our schools, the need to secure appropriate funding to retain the essential staff members who support our most vulnerable stakeholders, our students. During Wednesday's budget proposal meeting, various scenarios were presented, each with significant considerations. As we continue to navigate the financial landscape of our district, we recognize the challenges in making decisions that will have lasting impacts on our students and our staff. However, we want to stress the critical importance of maintaining positions that directly contribute to the student growth and well-being, including assistant principals, instructional coaches, nurses, counselors, and EC specialists. Those roles are not just supplementary, but foundational to the success of our schools. Our instructional coaches work directly with teachers, refining instructional strategies, ensuring the best practices are implemented effectively in the classroom. Counselors provide support, guiding students through personal challenges and helping them stay focused on their academic goals. Assistant principals serve as the backbone of schools, ensuring that discipline, student engagement, and instructional leadership remain strong. Nurses provide essential health services, address students' health needs, manage chronic illnesses, and provide emergency care, ensuring that students remain healthy and ready to learn. This conversation is not about blame, it's about collaboration. How can we work together, along with our county commissioners, to make Craven County Schools the choice for families? We must invest in our people because they are the ones that are assuring our students succeed. Our staff members do not just work in our schools, they build relationships, instill confidence, and create environments where students feel safe, supported, and empowered to achieve their fullest potential. As we move forward with budget conversations, I urge the Board to prioritize funding that allows us to retain these critical positions. When we invest in our educators and support staff, we invest in our children's futures. Let us commit to finding solutions that keep our schools strong, our staff supported, and our students thriving. Once again, we commend you and for your leadership and dedication to students, families, and educators of Craven County. We look forward to continued collaboration as we strive to make our schools a model of excellence. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Rachel Yor?
Good evening. My name is Rachel Yor, and I reside at 1711 Rim Avenue, and I serve as the Principal of Bridgestown Elementary School. I'm here tonight to advocate for our students and staff. I'm sad that in 30 years of my career in education, that I have never felt the need to speak to a Board to advocate what is best for students to excel in education until tonight. When asked by a loved one if I would speak as to what matters to me, I was quick to answer no. I explained I will speak about what matters to our students, who are our future, and what matters to our teachers and all staff who serve these students and prepare them for that future. We must remember that our schools are the heartbeat of our community. They are where dreams take shape, where knowledge is built, and where our future leaders are nurtured. Yet despite this critical role, our schools are continually asked to do more with less. You have before you an awesome task of ensuring we continue on our positive trajectory with adequate local funding. At this time, we are unable to speak to the state and federal funding, but there exists much concern as what these funding sources will hold for our schools. This week, you've been provided with extensive data and numbers to consider when making crucial decisions for our district that reflect the progress that we are making across the grade levels. As one of you stated last evening, these numbers and positions represent people, people who've made a lasting difference in the lives and learning of our students. I do want you to know that I appreciate your commitment to gaining a better understanding of what our schools need for our students to succeed. I hope you will listen to my message and the message of my colleagues as you make your decisions. In my heart, I believe we all agree, funding for our schools is not just about dollars and cents. It's about providing every child the opportunity to reach their full potential. It's about ensuring classrooms are equipped with modern resources, that teachers are adequately supported, and that learning environments are safe and inspiring. As an elementary principal, these are some of the roles that I believe are crucial to continue our students' academic success, as demonstrated in the various data points shared previously this week. I'm so thankful that most of you agreed last night of the importance of an assistant principal in every building. Thank you for realizing their importance and impact on student learning. Next, I'd like to focus on the role of our instructional coaches. Simply put, the job description for these positions does not capture the full impact of their work. Before we had coaches, our elementary schools lacked alignment. Resources and curricula varied widely from school to school, but thanks to them, we now have a unified district-wide approach, and the results speak for itself. Our coaches not only support the implementation of district-wide curricula, but also develop materials to support phonics instruction in kindergarten through 2nd grade, and they have ensured that we use high-quality resources and programs to give our students the best possible learning experiences. Their work does not end with curriculum. They are in classrooms daily, modeling lessons, providing professional development, and creating pacing guides that align with our district's vision. They are meeting with grade levels, discussing lesson plans, best strategies, and next steps alongside the school administration. They offer invaluable support to beginning teachers and teachers entering from other professions, ensuring they feel confident and capable in their roles. Additionally, the work of our social workers and guidance counselors are crucial in supporting our students. They serve as a bridge between our schools and families, especially as we address the increased issue of chronic absenteeism exasperated by the pandemic. By working with students, families, and staff, our social workers help remove barriers to attendance and promote the well-being of every child. Finally, I must emphasize the vital role of our teachers. They are not just educators, they are mentors, advocates, and role models. Providing them with fair salaries, professional development, is not a luxury, it's a necessity. So I stand before you today to urge you to prioritize education funding and seek the requested additional local funding needs. The requests are not luxury, but are needed items that we need for continued growth and proficiency. Let's show our commitment to education by making it a priority. Let's show our families, students, staff, and faculty that we are the choice for Craven County. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ashley Falkenberry?
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Ashley Falkenberry, and I am the principal at Trent Park Elementary School and also the vice president of the Craven County Principals and Assistant Principals Association. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today about an issue that is crucial to the success of our schools, and more importantly, our students. I am here as a former student, teacher, assistant principal, and now a parent of Craven County Schools, and I want to advocate for the continued support and funding of instructional personnel, such as our learning systems coaches and assistant principals, who are vital in maintaining our high levels of student achievement across our county, especially as we continue to address the significant academic gaps that have emerged since the pandemic. The challenges our students face today are greater than ever. The disruptions to learning during that pandemic have left many students still struggling to catch up, and it is our responsibility to provide the support they need to succeed. Our learning system coaches are essential in this effort as they provide targeted professional development, support teachers with evidence-based instructional strategies, and help bridge the gaps that have widened during that remote and hybrid learning periods. Likewise, our assistant principals play a crucial role in maintaining a structured and supportive learning environment, allowing principals to focus on leading the comprehensive instructional efforts. These positions are not just important, they are indispensable and to our school's success in overcoming the learning loss brought on by that pandemic. However, to sustain and strengthen our educational programs, we need to advocate for additional funding. Our neighboring districts are investing more heavily in our schools, attracting and retaining top talent, and providing resources necessary to close those academic gaps and support student success. If we are to remain competitive and ensure our students receive the high-quality education that they are today and deserve, we must secure increased funding now. By investing in our instructional personnel and our leadership roles, we are investing directly in the success of our students, helping them not just to recover, but thrive. Let us continue to set the standard of educational excellence in our county by securing the funding necessary to support those crucial roles and make it possible. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Kaitlin Watson?
Good evening, board members. My name is Kaitlin Watson, and I am the very proud principal of Grover Seafield's Middle School. I come before you tonight not only as a school leader, but as an advocate for students, families, and dedicated educators who make up our school community. Our district is facing a financial challenge, there is no denying that. But how we navigate these challenges will determine the future of our schools, our students, and our community. In difficult times, we must not look for blame, but for solutions. We must fight for the resources our students deserve rather than carving away at the very foundation that keeps our schools strong. I understand the impulse to look at budgets and cut positions that don't directly stand in front of a classroom every day, but education does not exist in a vacuum. Schools are living, breathing ecosystems, and every position you're considering eliminating plays a critical role in ensuring students can learn, grow, and thrive. If we continue to condense and stretch, what we are left with is an overburdened staff struggling to fill the gaps, and ultimately, it is our students who will suffer the most. At Wednesday's meeting, job descriptions were requested for each position in our district. We could go through all of them, but for time's sake, let's use the example of the school counselor. On paper, their job description reads something like this: Provide academic and emotional support to students. Offer crisis intervention. Coordinate 504 plans. Assist with career and high school readiness. Schedule student classes. But that description only scratches the surface of what they actually do. On any given day, our counselors are not just guiding students through academic decisions, they're also serving as our student-to-student and student council advisors in addition to other clubs. They are our major clarity champions to ensure career development plans for each eighth-grade student and lead our school's effort for Purple Star accreditation. They organize Veterans Day programs, staff professional development, and transition activities for incoming students. They plan our honor roll and principals list recognition ceremonies, run and operate our student store for positive behavior intervention supports, serve as the avid site coordinator and goal team leaders, and even step in as bus drivers and coaches. They are the point of contact for the military family liaison counselor. They lead MTSs interventions and SEL in attendance, facilitate parent conferences and home visits, and conduct family outreach. They also organize community service and fundraising events, serve as the point of contact for our NCVPS courses and jumpstart programs, and coordinate the Backpack Blessings programs as both the point of contact and distributor. Their roles extend far beyond what any job description could fully capture. Now imagine what happens when we cut positions like these. Maybe not this one specifically, but all of them are like this in a school setting. The responsibilities do not disappear. They shift on to teachers, administrators, and support staff, who are already balancing full plates. Our school nurses, social workers, instructional coaches, and central office staff play similar irreplaceable roles. Their absence won't save us money in the long run, but it will cost us student success, teacher retention, and community trust. When I arrived at Grover Seafield's in 2019, our school performance grade was a sixty-two. We now have risen to a school performance grade of sixty-nine, and I attribute that success to the team and supports we have been receiving over the last six years. I urge you, please do not view these positions as expendable line items on a spreadsheet. See them for what they are, the lifelines of our students. If we are serious about ensuring that every child has the opportunity to learn in a safe, supportive, and enriching environment, then we must invest in the people who make that possible. I am asking you to be our champions, to stand up and advocate for the federal, state, and local funding that our students and staff so desperately need. Ask for funding that helps us grow, not just operate by the skin of our teeth. Our community is watching, our teachers are watching, and most importantly, the whopping ninety-four percent of school-aged children in Craven County Schools and Craven County that choose Craven County Schools that we are privileged to serve are watching. Let's show them that when the going gets tough, we fight for what's right. Thank you for your time and your commitment to our schools.
Ms. Kim Scott?
Good evening. My name is Kim Scott, and I have the honor of serving as assistant principal at J.T. Barber Elementary School. When I stepped into my first classroom in Craven County at West Craven Middle School in 2008, I never imagined that I'd be standing in front of you as an assistant principal and a leader here in the county. Now, almost twenty years later, I see my former students walk their children through our doors, and I'm reminded of the profound and lasting impact that public education has on our future. During my tenure at Craven County Schools, I've served as a middle school math teacher, a K-5 music teacher, and a school administrator. I also had the honor of representing Craven County Schools as the 2014 Teacher of the Year. I originally moved from upstate New York to Craven County in 2004. How I ended up in North Carolina, I really don't know. But here I am, and here is where I stay. Craven County Schools is where I learned to be a teacher, it's where I learned to be a learner, and it's where I learned to be a leader. And this experience continues to fuel my commitment to our district and to our students. I fully recognize that the state does not provide enough assistant principal positions, or, as we all know now, months of employment, to fully meet the needs of our schools. But as an assistant principal, I urge you to consider fully funding the assistant principal positions we have to ensure that our students, teachers, and school communities receive the leadership and support they need to thrive. This is not a new conversation. I remember as a teacher around 2011, I might have that date wrong, but it's around there, when Craven County Schools attempted to share assistant principals between schools, at least at the elementary level where I was. It didn't work. By Christmas, my school had a full-time assistant principal again because the demands of leadership and student support were simply too great for a part-time presence. I remember as a teacher worrying, what am I going to do with an assistant principal that's only at my school on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and every other Friday? How is that going to help? The reality was, it didn't work well for us. Schools needed consistent, accessible, and engaged leadership each and every day. As an assistant principal, I worry that if I'm split between two schools, how can I give a hundred percent to a school community and be a hundred percent present if I'm split? Our students, teachers, and families deserve leaders who are fully engaged, fully accessible, and fully invested in their success each and every day. I don't know what my official job description is, but I know whatever is on paper, it is far beyond that. We serve as instructional leaders. We attend and lead PLC meetings, supporting teachers, analyzing data, refining instruction, and implementing best practices that align with MTSs, PBIS, and student engagement strategies. We serve as mentors and coaches, guiding staff through professional development, curriculum planning, and classroom management strategies to foster engaging, inclusive, and effective learning environments. We're problem solvers. We ensure that students have access to resources, families are informed, policies are communicated and clearly and consistently enforced. We promote a positive school culture, uphold high expectations, and work to ensure that all students receive the guidance and opportunities they need to succeed. We are connectors. We bridge the school and the community by leveraging partnerships, organizing events, and securing resources to enrich our students' educational experiences. We're advocates. We push for the funding, staffing, and support necessary to ensure that every child in Craven County receives a quality education. Our role extends far beyond supervising schedules, monitoring buses or discipline, and completing reports. We're here to shape, support, and strengthen the future of our education in our district. This is why I remain in Craven County and why I believe in the power of fully supporting and funding assistant principals. Our families, students, and staff deserve nothing less. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joseph Twilley?
Good evening, board. I wish my wife was doing this because she is way more knowledgeable in this situation than me, but she doesn't like doing it, so I'm gonna do it. Obviously, there's only, I think, two people on this board that currently have children in Craven County Schools. Obviously, they're not E.C. students, or else you would never think about cutting that program. My son is autistic. He's semi-verbal. He can do a lot of things, but he can't do the things other general education people can do. And now I hear you guys are thinking about cutting those programs. That is a huge mistake. You have no idea what harm this is gonna do to those children. Obviously, you haven't talked to any of these teachers, if that's what you believe. I know that can't be the case. You have teachers right now that are afraid to speak out because they're afraid to be fired by you people. How can you can... How would you do that? Why would you do that, just because they want to speak out against this? I know the state, I know the county, has money to provide for these children. There are different levels of autism, there's different levels of mental disabilities, and you need to know this. If this doesn't get fixed, you're going to hurt these students. It's not gonna be good. You have kids in... That are violent, that they have to evacuate classes just to calm the kids down. Then you have kids like mine that if that happened, he would completely shut down and he wouldn't do anything for the rest of the day because he wouldn't know what to do. My son goes to general education part of the day, but he's still not on the level as a first grader. He goes to Creekside Elementary, and you have some of the best E.C. teachers in the world right there. But if you do not listen to these people, if you do not listen to these teachers, you are going to harm the spectrum of students that need to be cared for on a constant basis. I've already come to grips that the rest of my life, my son probably will never leave my house, and I'm okay with that. Now just imagine that being one of your children, and you're gonna cut the funding for them, and you're just gonna jam them all in together because that's what you believe special education is. They're all the same. They're not all the same. There's kids out here that are already in general education, guess what? They're more the same than mine. So as much as I don't want to be a hypocrite about it, I don't care about them. I care about my son. And if... I don't want it to where he's gonna be punished because we can't find the funds or the teachers to provide the education he needs. Please do not write off these kids just because they have autism, just because they have some kind of mental disorder, just because they have Down syndrome, it doesn't matter, they deserve the same education as any one of the kids here. That's what they need, that's what I demand that you get them. I will be back at every meeting until I am sure that you will not cut the funding that they need. I will do whatever possible. I don't care. It's my son is one of the most important people in my world. My daughter went to Craven County Schools her entire education. And I'll be honest with you, it wasn't the best when she got to Grover Seaf... And it wasn't the best when she got to New Bern High. And I'm glad she's out of New Bern High because now she no longer gets pepper sprayed. Oh, you guys didn't know about that, did you? Yeah, you should really talk to your resource officers and how they distrib... You know, break up fights nowadays, by the way. But my son, he needs the education that only this place can provide, and if you cut it, he's never gonna get it. They need... There's different levels, there's different spectrums. And I... Please, please talk to the E.C. teachers in your district because I guarantee if you allow them to be honest with you, they will, and they will tell you what they need. Please, by the grace of God, you will listen to me on this subject. Thank you.
Dr. Hillary Batwell?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board and the Craven County community. I'm Dr. Hillary Batwell, Director of Accountability and Information Systems with Craven County Schools. In the spirit of transparency, I reside in Onslow County, where my children are the fourth generation to be raised in our family home. However, we are also proud parents of Craven County Schools. They did not start here. I saw the work and could not get them here fast enough. Our second grader and fourth grader are flourishing at J.T. Barber Elementary School, and our eighth grader is thriving with the competitive programming available through Craven Virtual Academy. With a substantial commute, Craven County Schools is not the easier option just because I am blessed to be employed here. It is the best option for our family. Two days ago, I stood before you and presented undeniable factual evidence. Our schools are achieving remarkable through-year gains. Families are choosing Craven County Public Schools in overwhelming numbers. But in that same presentation, my words were misinterpreted. It was suggested that I claimed families who do not choose us are making the wrong choice. That is not what I said. That is not what I believe. What I said and what I stand by is that many who do not choose us never even gave us a chance. That is not an accusation, it is a fact. And yet here I stand, having spent the last two days reflecting, not on the incredible progress of our students and our staff that they're making, but on a feeling I cannot shake: discouragement. But here's the thing. When you are called to stand up for something greater than yourself, you do not stay discouraged for long. So here it goes. I am asking the board to adopt one agenda and one agenda only, to wholeheartedly support the students, staff, and families of Craven County Public Schools. That should be our singular, unwavering mission. I fear that this will be misinterpreted as disrespect, and certainly that is not the intention here. But respect is not silence, respect is honesty. Walking through this district asking what's wrong with Craven County Schools is not leadership. It is not service, and it is not the role of this board. Because if you go looking for flaws, you will find them. Spoiler alert, we know what they are, and we are working relentlessly to fix them. But change just two words in that sentence. Walk into our classrooms and ask what is great about Craven County Schools. Ask our teachers who pour their hearts into their students despite being stretched thinner than ever. Ask our principals and assistant principals who, if you give them a moment of your time, will talk your ear off about their students and their successes. Ask the support staff, like our custodians, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, teachers assistants, office personnel, and data managers. The people who make a system like ours not just function but thrive. Ask them what they see, and you will get more than you ever bargained for. Ask them what they see, and you will get more than you ever bargained for. But instead of collectively lifting up this district, instead of standing shoulder to shoulder with those doing the work, this Board is considering devastating cuts. Cuts that some have described as trimming the fat and eliminating waste. Let me be absolutely clear, you will not be trimming fat or finding waste. You will be chipping away at the foundation of our schools. And when you weaken the foundation, the entire structure becomes unstable. It is too soon to be making cuts. It is too soon to be notifying people, and that is not on our superintendent. She and members of Cabinet are only doing so because it has been made abundantly clear that there is no intention of asking for what we actually need. If you are not willing to ask for what we actually need, before any cuts, if you are not willing to try, then this will fall squarely on the shoulders of this Board. Let them tell us no, not you. Fight for us. Many of us have given you the data, many of us have shown you the truth. If these cuts happen, if this district begins to fail, not because of our teachers, not because of our students, not because of our leadership, but because we did not have your support. The blame will not fall on our superintendent. It will not fall on our Cabinet. It will not fall on our principals, our teachers, or the many support staff who make our schools work every single day. It will fall squarely on the shoulders of this Board if we fail to even try. So, I ask you tonight, where do you stand? Because a strong, confident, and united Board would not be discussing how to dismantle the very foundation of our schools. They would be preparing a speech for the county commissioners demanding to know why we are not investing more in our children, the most important thing that has ever walked this earth. That is a fight worth having. The choice is yours. I thank you to those who came to me and said to keep my head up and feel supported to say what needs to be said. We are trained to take it, to sit back and say nothing. And because of that, it took me two days to create this response. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lorraine Gardner?
Hi there. I'm Lorraine Gardner, and I live at 312 Bridgeton... 312 A Street in Bridgeton. I think we should shake our shoulders briefly because there is a lot of weight on you. I'm a former retired social worker, so you might have guessed from my earrings or my sneakers, and I'm here to talk about the Bridgeton land that's for sale. I was so happy to read your mission statement because I have a proposal that is in real keeping with your mission. So, after we've taken our breath, I'm gonna tell you that I'm very grateful that you're doing this job. I know it can't be easy. I worked in the schools in the past, and I know, even as a social worker, it was very hard to watch all that you have to go through. So, what I'm really asking about the mission is that you would like to liaise with the community, and it says it here twice, that you're a strong community Board. So, what the town of Bridgeton would like to ask, and I'm not representing the town, I'm representing myself, but we do have a commissioner here, and the town has given me permission to say that we are interested in this land. It is public land now. It's owned by taxpayer dollars that provided money to... for the Board to buy it. Some of it was given as a gift to the town of Bridgeton, and some was purchased by the Board. So, you had a school there for many years, and now that land has been vacant for all these years. So, we're not asking for a handout. I'm just asking that you think about a way to get your money that allows the public land and Bridgeton and the Craven County population as a whole to benefit from this public land. Maybe we could work with Habitat for Humanity. I spoke to the Board of the CEO there. She said she'd be glad to work with us. Maybe we could... the town has said we could divide some of that property. We could bring seven, eight buyers to the table. Some single-family houses could be built on Hickory Street. So, I have designs, I have plans. I've called many agencies. River Keepers is quite interested. It's a watershed. It could be used for public education about saving our pollution from the river. It could save other land from flooding by creating some basins on that land. So, there are many public agencies that want to help. There are grant funders that are interested, but we can't do it with a 10-day period. So, all we're saying is, would you consider giving us more time so that we could bring you a buyer or multiple buyers, and maybe you could be the liaison with the community, with a builder that would build some affordable housing for teachers that would like to stay in the area but they can't afford something? Maybe with some land for our police department to expand so that they could protect that park and our community? So, there's lots of ways that this could happen, and you could still get the money. But in 10 years, 20 years, maybe I won't be here, some of you could have grandchildren, great-grandchildren who could say, "Wow, let's go to Grandma's Park. Let's go to Grandpa's Park, and let's see what is there." Once this land is gone to the highest bidder, it's gone. It could be a McMansion, and next time you come to the Blueberry Festival, where are you gonna park? We need that land for parking. So, you've come to the Blueberry Festival, you've enjoyed that river view at times, and we think that that public land should be... we should try to save it. And we've been trying. We've been making lots of phone calls. We have a small committee working on it, and the more we talk to people, they can't do it as quickly as a 10-day upset bid process. So, we're asking you to consider, would it be in the best interest of the Board to actually act on their mission to liaise with the community for what's best interest of the community? And this land is valuable to the community. It's used by your students. Your teachers could use it even more, and we could do lots of liaising with you. So, that's what I'm asking. I'm asking for you to consider allowing more time. You don't have to allow just us. You could allow anyone more time. It's fair. I know you have a mandate. You can't play favors, but I think that this public land is different than budget cuts. This land is vacant. It's sitting there. It's being used right now by people all over the county, and once it's gone, it's gone. So, thank you very much, and I hope that you will consider our request.
Thank you. Randy Gardner?
Hi. My name's Randy Gardner, and I too live in Bridgeton, 312 North A Street. I came with a prepared speech, and I have to kind of compliment... I don't know her last name, Jennifer, the PR lady, well, and as well as this gentleman here, Lee Kirkman. And the reason why I called them out is because they kind of exemplify what I think of as part... a big part of a public school. She went and got me a Band-Aid. I had a wicked cut here, and he had the... he had the fore with all to introduce himself to a bunch of us over here. I've never been to one of these. I like the building. I think it's kind of nice, and it's nice to meet people. But what I came to... prepared to talk about is similar to what my wife just shared her heart with you on. And I got to thinking about the news today, and I'm sure everybody's aware of the pending cuts and the, I think, the terrible things that are gonna happen to the Department of Education. And I've listened to several of these educators, much more fluent and much more eloquent about what they do for our kids and our community. And I got to thinking, and I threw away my... what I had prepared. It didn't make any sense. But what does make sense to me is that, you know, Lorraine talked about the Blueberry Festival. It's just a community thing. We all get together once a year. We try to sponsor a good feeling for kids and family, and it's Craven County. Everybody can come. It's been happening for a long time. Once the property is gone, once somebody takes it over, we'll... we'll never get to have that there, at least. And I got to thinking about what I experienced as a student in public schools. Maybe a lot of these other people have too, you know? Hello? My time's not up! You know, I got to thinking about the science club and the fine arts and the things that I used to do that didn't have anything to do with the academic, but brought my life a better sense of balance. And we had students from, I don't know, different countries, and just that whole mix of, you know, people that, I don't know, we came from every walk of life. It was a working-class school, so to speak. It wasn't a high academic thing. And all I know is that, seeing these students here, I think that's a great opportunity for them to see social work 101, how it's really done. So, kudos to them. But I fear, when I hear what's pending, that you could lose the ambition and the drive to champion the funds, that no one else can scream louder than you. No one else has the bully pulpit, I think, louder or better than you to say, "We've gotta support our students. We have to support the schools," because it's the community that so depends upon it, not just the Blueberry Festival. But anyway, I wanted to just say that, you know, what we do matters here, and I know you've probably heard that a thousand times, but what it really matters is down to the first grader who walks in on the elementary school and is scared because this is the first time he's ever been away from mom and dad, and this is his first experience. And I don't know if any of these young students here remember that, but I have children that remember it. Anyway, thank you. Now my time's up. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Jonathan Davis?
Since you said my name, I think everybody knows who I am, Patty. I reside in New Bern with my wife and three amazing kids. I would like to address the embarrassing display of unprofessional behavior that took place during Tuesday's work session. I mean, really, Board members are actually using the word crucified when talking about people who spoke at public input, which is supposed to be welcomed by you guys. Should... they shouldn't be beat down because they want to come speak and base their opinion. They also called a Monday show, an opinion-based Monday show. They have a new nickname for it called the Monday Meltdown. It's my shirt that I'm wearing, which is, again, an opinion-based show, and everybody's entitled their own opinion. Not sure why that was a problem. Let's get one thing straight. Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior, was truly crucified. So, let's not be dramatic when we use that word and say stuff like others are being crucified. I don't think anybody's being crucified here, okay? I don't think anybody's... maybe they've been talked about, but not crucified. Look that word up before you use it. Be better. Be better. As for the Board member who attempted to berate and intimidate people for speaking, newsflash, it didn't work. In fact, you've only encouraged more people to speak up, as you can see by the 17 people who signed up to give their opinion... their opinions tonight. So, great job. I'm excited about the huge turnout. Let's move to the superintendent's well-prepared statement that she had plenty of help with, I'm sure. Let's set the record straight. The secretly-recorded audio situation has not been handled, despite what she carefully crafted narrative is being pushed. If the Board actually believe it has been handled, I'd love to hear from one of you, any of you, actually, when you do discuss public input, instead of the superintendent's opinion. But no worries, I won't hold my breath. My full year request from December still has not been fulfilled, and at this point, I doubt it ever will be, but that's just business as usual around here. Let's talk about the whole "we're not recording this" comment. On November 22nd of 2024, before the meeting even started, the superintendent clearly stated, and I quote, "Just know we're not recording this." Now, let's fast forward three days because some people might not know about this. Three days later, on November 25th, superintendent called my wife, who had won the election but hadn't been sworn in, and asked for a meeting to get better acquainted to her. Lo and behold, the first thing she said during that meeting was, "Just so you know, Ms. Davis, we're not recording this." The exact same thing she said to me three days prior. So, I guess I'm a liar. I guess I made that up. I don't know, and that's fine. I can take it, but I find it very ironic that my wife didn't know about that meeting with Ms. Miller that I had that Friday, because I didn't tell her about it until after she came home Monday and told me about hers. So, let you... I'll let the public form their own opinion on that. I want to take a moment to thank Ms. Darlene Gibbs for calling for an audit into the HR Department, because when or if that happens, the public's gonna be shocked. I've printed out a crystal-clear email evidence for every Board member to have from a New Bern... former New Bern high school teacher and coach Cory Bowie, who was deliberately giving false information so he wouldn't file an appeal after being removed from his coaching duties. If anyone wants to see those emails, I have extra copies over here. I'll gladly provide them. Cory is now thriving in Pitt County Schools, where he is a teacher and coach there. Also, I'd like to thank Ms. Spees for encouraging the public to not apologize or be afraid to speak at public input. Only for another Board member to immediately disagree with her. That was a nice example of teamwork by that Board member. It was truly uncalled for, but expected, I guess. I'm gonna skip through some of that because it's probably not even necessary, but... I don't think any of the Board members who were inappropriately called out during Tuesday's work session tell anything about closed-session meetings. But I do believe there are two Board members that may leak information, but I don't know who they are, but I think there might be two of them, that have been doing it for some time, long before the new Board was sworn in. I will remind everyone that there are also two other central employee staffs who are in closed-session meetings. I won't single them out here, as it should be easy to figure out. I was secretly recorded, and that audio was shared with others, who then shared it with private citizens. So, people can't be trusted. They want to point fingers, and it appears that the leaked information came from others. And I do think that the two Board members that were singled out are owed an apology, because I don't think they leaked any information. Those two members are Ms. Gibbs and Ms. Mason. Y'all should have never been singled out during Tuesday. That was uncalled for and unprofessional. Thank you.
Ms. Jamisha Harris?
Jamisha Harris, Monterey Circle, New Bern, North Carolina, educators and community members. I want to start by recognizing the important discussions that have taken place regarding the challenges facing Craven County Schools. From conversations about staffing shortages to funding gaps that impact every classroom, it's clear that we are at a pivotal moment. But what concerns me most is that we continue to focus on how to manage li... how to manage limited resources rather than how to demand the resources our schools deserve. Let's be honest. Craven County Schools have been underfunded for years. There has not been a meaningful increase in local funding in over a decade. Despite raising costs, rising costs, growing student needs, and inflation making it hard to provide a high-quality education, meanwhile, our county commissioners and state representatives had failed... have failed to fill the gap. Instead, the district is once again forced to make difficult choices, whether it's staffing schools with fewer assistant principals, forcing students into overcrowded classrooms, or discussing cuts to essential programs like arts, PE, and exceptional children services. This should not be happening. At the same time, the state just expanded private school vouchers approving $468 million in taxpayer money to help fund private education. Let's be clear. I support school choice. Parents have the ability to make the best decisions for their children, but school choice should not come at the expense of fully-funded public schools. In Craven County, over 13,000 students rely on public schools, while only 1,300 attend private schools. In the state, that's half a billion dollars that was sent to private institutions. So, it has the money to fund public schools fully. So, the question is, what are we doing about it? This Board was not elected to simply manage what little funding you are given. You were elected to fight for the resources our schools need to thrive. That means taking action, not just overseeing budgets, but actively advocating for the funding necessary to provide every child in Craven County with a high-quality education. I'm calling on the school Board to formally request increased state funding from our elected representatives in Raleigh, and to push our county commissioners to do the same. This isn't about politics. It's about making sure our classrooms, our teachers, and our students have what they need to succeed. Additionally, I urge this Board... Additionally, I urge the, this board to demand that our county commissioners prioritize education in their budget decisions. Property values have gone up, meaning county revenue has increased, so why hasn't investment in education increased with it? Our counties, other counties in North Carolina have made public schools a priority by raising teacher supplements, improving facilities, and expanding student services. Craven County must do the same. I know advocating for more funding is not always easy, but if we don't fight for our schools, who will? Let's be clear, Craven County Schools do not have a spending problem, they have a funding problem. And this board must be a voice for the students and educators who are being directly impacted. You were elected to represent the people in this district. That includes the students sitting in overcrowded classrooms, the teachers working multiple jobs to make ends meet, and the staff keeping these schools running with fewer resources than ever before. Tonight, I'm asking you to balance a broken budget. I am at, tonight, I am not asking you to balance a broken budget, I'm asking you to fight for what is right. The board must demand more from your county, the state, and for the people who are in power to make changes for the education system in Craven County. Because let me tell you, our community is watching and we will remember who stood up for our students and who stayed silent when public education was underfunded. This time, it, this time is for, for cutting is over, the time for cutting is over. The time for action is now. But caring is not enough, dedication is not enough, passion is not enough. We need funding, we need resources, we need education, as, action. Education is not a political issue, it's not a partisan debate, it's a moral obligation when we fail to invest in education. We fail our children, we fail our teachers, we fail our entire community. If we are serious about preparing the next generation for success, we are, we are serious about making Craven County a place where families want to work, grow, and live, then we must act like it. Fund, fully fund our schools, no cuts, no excuses, respectfully.
Ms. Kelly Muse.
My name is Kelly Muse. I live at 612 Meyer Moore's Lane and evidently look at me, so I considered it pretty important for me to be here. The things I could say. Number one, Mrs. is not pronounced misra's, it's terrible, it's incorrect. A summary of the work session does not drone on for 10 minutes, it's a summary. Oh, Jesus. And it's also not a personal op-ed as to what you think as to how someone did. You don't include an evaluation in a summary of the work session. I need you guys to look at IDEA. So if you cut some EC positions, EC is the most highly fragile, easily to get a school system sued. You think we're in a budget crisis, screw with you EC people, and then we get sued. That's exactly what you need to do. As far as ESS goes, you're crazy if you want to mess with that too. Yes, we've spent a boat ton of money with them, but we're not paying for background checks on subs, that is a completely separate issue. And Jamisha is exactly right. Craven County is ranked in the top third of ability to pay, but what they have actually given this school system is like 73rd out of all of the districts in the state. There's 105 of them in case you don't know. So the higher the number is, the worse it is. The lower the number is, the better you are. And you guys need to get a grasp on that. And I want to say, I am so proud of the educators and staff members that have come up here and spoken tonight. They're not afraid of her, they're afraid of y'all. I know for a fact, you've been out questioning people for a fact, because they've come and they've told it. That is not professionalism and that is not leadership. It is clear, darling Gibbs, that you are out to get somebody. You too. Keep having lunch at Harris Teeter. And you're not hitting on a whole lot either, but it needs to be said. This, y'all have turned this entire board into a witch hunt and that is not what you're supposed to do. So to say that I am disgusted and disappointed is an understatement, but I am very, very proud of these educators that came up here to speak tonight because clearly they're not afraid of the superintendent or her cabinet.
Hello, um, my name is Nell Hudson. I live at 301 Fairway Drive in Trent Woods. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Please ask the county commissioners for the full amount of money needed to prevent staffing and program cuts. Because of the school board's transparency last year regarding the budget and throughout this school year, I was surprised that it seems our county commissioners are not fully prepared to fully fund our schools and that the school district is considering making cuts. I was, I'm also surprised that some people seem to be hinting at financial malfeasance. Our school district has regular audits. The school board hired a new firm to do the audit in 2024. The audits have come back clean. The auditor warned of a possible budget crisis. Now please don't get me wrong, a district should always be reviewing staffing roles and programs. Student and educators' needs change, so there are times when programs should be cut and adjustments in staffing made. Last night, you talked about the countywide athletic director position. It might be a position that is no longer needed, but remember, it was a position asked for by the community and there is now North Carolina Senate Bill 48. This bill will allow homeschool, private, and charter school students to participate in sports programs at our public schools. If this bill passes, you will need a countywide athletic director to handle everything involved and the small fee that the public schools would be allowed to charge these new players will not cover the work required of the school district. So yet another possible unfunded state mandate. What is frustrating is that our school district would not be in this situation if our General Assembly had followed our state constitution and fully funded our public schools. This year, over $6 million of our tax money is going to support private schools in Craven County because our elected representatives in Raleigh expanded vouchers. So this is a crisis of choice, choices made by other elected bodies since you can't raise your own funds. A budget is a moral document. It is our hopes and prayers being put into action. Please ask for all the funding that is needed so cuts do not have to be made. If the county commissioners do not want to fund their request, let the commissioners make those statements publicly so that we as a community can hold them accountable. If you do not ask for enough, we will hold you accountable. I hope the commissioners will fully fund the request, maybe dipping into their own fund balance, and that with pressure from this board, the Board of Commissioners, and our community, our elected representatives in Raleigh will finally follow the North Carolina Constitution and fully fund our schools so that we will not have this problem next year. Years ago, when I was a teacher in Edgecombe County, I had a principal, Mr. Thomas, whose motto was "Students First." Honestly, at first I dismissed, I dismissed it. It seemed too simple of a motto, but it has become one of my guiding principles, whether in my church ministry or when volunteering with kids. It is this district's guiding principle too, its true north. For our school district to grow successful students, there must be enough people in our school buildings. This isn't just for academics, it is for their safety. Successful students also need teachers who are supported with all the resources they need. Successful students need parents who can have their questions and concerns quickly addressed. Successful students need a school board and a community that supports them. Please have the political will and courage to ask for all that is needed. Thank you.
Larry Lee.
My name is Larry Lee. I live at 303 North A Street in Bridgeton. And just as a side note, I, I've been before many, many boards and I have to say, for the size of this meeting, this is one of the most well-organized, fairly civil meetings. The speakers have all been so passionate and articulate and eloquent, so I, I commend all of you. It's, it's, it's really impressive. I, you can tell from my strange accent that I'm relatively new to this area. I've only been here about a year and a half, but having said that, I have over 35 years experience as a builder and a developer. I'm here to talk about the land in Bridgeton. So I understand, I mean, basically, we're just asking him for more time. As a builder, it looks to me that if you've already made your decision today that you're going to vote to pass this, uh, this auction or this upset bid, then this might be a mute session, mute issue. What I'm trying to ask is the board members to look at the possibility of us coming up with the funds to acquire the property and also a comprehensive plan that makes sense for everybody. We're looking, we understand to compete with a builder who can theoretically build 10 houses with the frontage that we have on the land that you have, it would be, it would be a disaster. It would impact the neighborhood, it would impact the park. We need some time to be able to come up with something to maybe sell parcels of the land to builders that we're in control of what they can build and where they can build it and also possibly build some structures that may help the public and the private sector. There's also a discrepancy, I understand, about a sliver of land there that was gifted to Bridgeton years ago, so we'd like some time to be able to investigate those and come up with somebody, something that would be symbiotic for everybody. Um, I think Lorraine kind of hit upon it, we only have a small time period, if you're going to vote on that, to make a decision that's going to impact a lot of people for a lot of years beyond what we're going to be able to use the park for. You're all on the Board of Education, so you have a personal vested interest with children. To me, a park is a place where children and adults can be play in a safe haven and create memories. So we're asking you to let us together come up with a plan where we can create memories and something that we can be proud of and not look at it as a mistake that we made because we were harsh to take the liability off of your plate and to increase your capital reserves. Thank you.
And last but not least is Denise Magwood.
My name is Denise Magwood. I am a resident at 110 Rose Garden Court in New Bern and I am in District 5. I don't know why I said that, but that's what I am. All right. First and foremost, I was initially going to discuss the budget or furthermore, the, the increase of funding, but honestly, I don't feel like I need to because everybody that went before me that discussed the increase or asking you guys to do what we voted you to do, which is go before the commissioners and get the increase, they have done that passionately and very respectfully. So kudos to you guys. I'm actually going to discuss about the possible cut of our athletic trainers. I want to give you a date, November the 16th, 2023. New Bern High School traveled to Cleveland to, um, play in a football game. It was a playoff game, think round four, and my youngest son at the time, who had just turned 15 years old, was hit hard. The game was stopped, an ambulance was brought out onto the field. He laid on that ground for 23 minutes, 23. I was on the sidelines, I had no idea what was going on, but our athletic trainer, Luke, came over to me personally to reassure me that they were working on him. I get that cuts need to be made, but we are a school system that offers athletics. I don't want to hear anything about what we can do away with athletics, that's ridiculous. It all works together. Arts are important, athletics is important, academics is important. No one is taking anything away. We put that student athlete in front of that for a reason, for us to even consider. I feel like this gentleman who said, "How can we even consider cutting the EC program? How can we even consider cutting athletic direct, athletic trainers?" You're telling us that they're, okay, we can have a first responder out there, and I get that, but where's the personliness? Nobody would have came over to me and talked to me, but then we also, we're going to offer this to every single sport or are we only going to pick and choose? If we are not offering this to all of our students, then we shouldn't be offering it to any of them. The second thing that I want to discuss is the embarrassment from Tuesday's meeting. This is, it's, it's getting really sad to watch. At the end of the meeting, that is a prime opportunity to showcase goodness in Craven County Schools. I, I, I want y'all to really hear me. At the end of your meetings, that's a prime opportunity to showcase goodness in Craven County Schools, but we seem to want to utilize that time to passively aggressively attack each other. I'm not sure, and I know we're not supposed to say names, so I won't, I, I will make sure and follow protocol and keep it classy, but when a board member chooses that time to address other board members in things that you feel is immoral or wrong, that's not the time. You were in closed session, you should have did that there. That's the same thing that we teach in our children. Do we want our teachers to have a disagreement with their principals, their supervisors in front of students? No, we don't. It was an embarrassment. And then we always want to say, well, that's why people don't want to come and teach and work in Craven County. That's not why. I was in Okinawa, Japan before we came here. The first thing I did was I looked at prior board meetings, I looked at schools, and I made my decision based off of that. But if I was an educator and I was witnessing that particular board member, I wouldn't want to come work here because of the board, not because of anything else. Please consider showing kindness, the same thing that we ask our students to do each day that they enter our buildings. We ask them to be respectful, so you guys need to be showing the example of being respectful to each other. Thank you.
Our meeting, our meeting is back in order. And at this time, we'll give a brief discussion on the public input. Does anything you'd like to add here?
I would like to respond.
Yes, Ms. Gibbs.
Thank you all for everybody coming. We do appreciate you coming and speaking to us. We don't hear from you in any other way, except for you to come and speak to us and let us know your hearts. I thank you very much. I'd like to address the accusation that I talked with someone. I don't know where that's coming from. I haven't talked to anyone looking for dirt. I was asking anyone for help. What can I do to help? And that was a constituent of mine, and that's my job, is to ask, "What can I do to help you in your schools?" I was in education for 11 years in this county. I know what teachers go through. I know what support staff goes through. So, I'm just asking for help. For the gentleman that spoke about the EC department, I have two grandsons in the EC department. I'm fully aware of what needs to be done there, and we're just here to help. We just want to help and make things better. So, we appreciate you letting us know what we can do to make your lives better. I have not leaked any information. I don't know where that's coming from, but it's mighty easy for folks to speak when you can't respond to them. I would appreciate anyone coming and talking to me. If you have issues or hear something, please come and go to the horse's mouth and ask me, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just going to say again, as I said at the work session, all the members of the public are welcome here to come and talk to us, and we appreciate so much those of you that spoke up tonight and those of you that come and speak to us other times as well. We're not going to make specific responses here, but there were some common themes. And I just want to also, as a matter of information to the public, let you know that the board is not responsible for the hiring and firing of people in school district. And the board is also not responsible for the presentation of the budget. The board looks to the experts in the school district to tell us what are the needs. And then, we are advocates for those things that the professionals are telling us that they need. So, I just, I know that, I just want to make that clear, that we're doing what we can and we are, we're waiting on guidance still on what those budget needs are. Yes, Ms. Kittner?
Yep. Okay. I would also like to thank everyone for coming out tonight. When I asked last night for the job descriptions, that was my attempt to, for the benefit of my fellow board members, to sort of humanize the possibility of cutting anybody or any positions or moving anybody around. Like I said last night, I'm not a numbers person. I'm a people person. And I think that having you all come out tonight and really actually put your faces to it was more than any job description could actually do. And giving us the actual job description and then telling us everything else that goes on top of that was more than we could ask for. So, thank you guys for doing that. Thank you for taking the time out and coming and talking with us. This is what we needed. This shows us the realities of what's in front of us. And I think that, I think it was, I'm not going to say her name, but one of them said that the county commissioners need to prioritize public education, and I agree with that. That is the backbone of our county. They are the future of our county. They're the future of the state, the country, anywhere they go. And I believe that we need to ask for what we need. I'm not afraid to say that. I'm not afraid to ask them for that. You know, I think, I said last night that what I'm, one of the things that I'm not going to budge on is EC. And I don't know if that gentleman or his wife were here last night. I don't know who his wife is. I don't see him here, but, oh, there you are. Hello. So, I understand your frustrations and your pain. So I understand your frustrations and your pain. I don't want any cuts to the EC at all. I don't. And I'm sorry that you have to go through that. But we are here to support you and your children. So I don't want to have to do any of this. And I want to make our school system as good as it possibly can be for our students. And that's why we're all here. We're not here for ourselves. You know, we are here for our staff, yes, but we're here for our students first. And if we don't put them first, then, you know, what are we even doing? So that's all I have to say. But thank you guys for coming.
Ms. Dacey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So lots of comments, and I of course want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I especially want to thank our staff, especially our Bangor teachers, for coming out and talking about what happens at their great school, which I enjoy spending time at. So thank you all for being here tonight and putting some more meat on the bones of what all these things are that we're talking about. I think it's really helpful, particularly for the new board members to understand. I also want to specifically thank Dr. Wallace and all the work that she does with C.C. Papa and all of our principals for coming out. Dr. Boutwell, I especially want to thank you for speaking from the heart about what you perceive, because what people perceive is important as well. And with regard to EC, I don't think we've had any discussions about any EC cuts. I think that's one of the last things that we could possibly cut because we have all kinds of federal requirements that we have to comply with. They're difficult for us to comply with because it's a very difficult area for us to hire folks. There aren't enough EC teachers and TAs to go around. There are very few who are coming out of school these days. And so it's a very competitive area and one that I know the HR folks have a really hard time recruiting in. So if we have those people, we're going to hold on to them. And I certainly hope that everybody who works in the system understands that even if there's some discussion about positions, speaking for myself, I appreciate what you do each and every day. I hope that I don't have to say that, but I'm going to make it really clear tonight because you are an incredibly important part of what we do. We cannot be a successful district without everybody picking up their part in the business of educating our kids in this county. And both in my role here as a board member and at the State Board of Directors for the School Boards Association, we had a meeting this morning with the State Superintendent by Zoom. We're going to continue to advocate for better teacher pay. That is going to be not an easy thing for us to do, even in this budget cycle. There is a bill on the House side, but there is not yet one on the Senate side. And funding for positions at the state level has continued to be a challenge. And I think it's because of a particular person in the state senate. And it's going to take us a while to get around that. So I would second what Lauren has to say. I think we have to get a very good handle on what we need. And I don't think I will ever be afraid of asking for what we need because there are things that we have to have in order to support our students and our staff. And I do think that that does mean, in many cases, that we will need the public to actually speak up and speak out about what is important to you in your county. Because your tax dollars fund not just this system, but everything at county government. And I will also say that last year, when we adopted the budget, I made it very clear that when we did so, everything in this year's budget was not sustainable. We knew at the time it was not sustainable. And we said so very clearly. Everyone was on notice about that. Would we have liked to have made, some of us made more cuts at that point? Yes. But there was not the political will to do so. And so we have the situation that we do today. That's all I have.
And one additional thing is to say that the county commissioners have not rejected any level of budgeting for us yet. And I want to be very clear about that. They have asked the school system, the school district, to provide their needs, but they have not declined any budget requests right now. And I also want to be clear that historically, our county commissioners, while Craven County may be middle of the pack in the contributions that our county gives, our county commissioners historically have, when we needed additional funding outside of the regular budget cycle, they have tried to step in to help us with that. So thank you all again for coming out to give public input tonight. Our next item is a proposal on the Bridgeton property. Mr. Gatchell, do you have a, have guidance on that or a?
Does the board have a copy of the resolution?
Yes, I think Ms. Dacey has it. Okay. Ms. Dacey is going to read a resolution about the Bridgeton property.
Resolution authorizing upset bid process. Negotiated offer an upset bid pursuant to General Statute Section 160A, 269. Whereas the Craven County Board of Education owns certain property located at 902 and 907 North B Street, Bridgeton, Craven County, North Carolina. And whereas the Craven County Board of Education recently declared the real property declared above a surplus property and passed a resolution to sell it during a meeting on October 10th, 2024. And whereas North Carolina General Statute Section 168-269 permits the Craven County Board of Education to sell property by upset bid after receipt of an offer for the property. And whereas the Craven County Board of Education has received an offer to purchase the property described above in the amount of $200,000 in cash to close within 60 days of the acceptance of the offer submitted by Dave Vincent. And whereas prospective buyer has five business days to pay to the superintendent and certified funds the required 5% deposit on the offer. Therefore, the Craven County Board of Education resolves that number one, the Craven County Board of Education authorizes sale of the property described above through the upset bid procedure of North Carolina General Statute Section 160A-269. Two, upon receipt of the required 5% deposit on the offer, if received within five business days of this resolution, the superintendent shall cause a notice of the proposed sale to be published. The notice shall describe the property and the amount and other terms of the offer and shall state the terms under which the offer may be upset. Persons wishing to upset the offer that has been received shall submit a sealed bid with their offer to the Office of the Craven County Board of Education within 10 days after the notice of sale is published. At the conclusion of the 10-day period, the superintendent shall open the bids, if any, and the highest such bid will become the new offer. If there is more than one bid in the highest amount, the first such bid received will become the new offer. Four, if a qualifying higher bid is received, the superintendent shall cause a new notice of upset bid to be published and shall continue to do so until a 10-day period has passed without any qualifying upset bid having been received. At that time, the amount of the final high bid shall be reported to the Craven County Board of Education. Number five, a qualifying higher bid is one that raises the existing offer by not less than 10% of the first $1,000 of that offer and 5% of the remainder of that offer. Number six, a qualifying higher bid must also be accompanied by a deposit in the amount of 5% of the bid. The deposit may be made in cash, cashier's check, or certified check. The Craven County Board of Education will return the deposit on any bid not accepted and will return the deposit on an offer subject to upset if a qualifying higher bid is received. The Craven County Board of Education will return the deposit of that final high bidder at closing. Number seven, the terms of the final sale are that the Craven County Board of Education must approve the final high offer before the sale is closed, which it will do within 60 days after the final upset period, bid period has passed, and the buyer must pay with cash at the time of closing. Number eight, the Craven County Board of Education reserves the right to withdraw the property from sale at any time before the final high bid is accepted and the right to reject at any time all bids. Number nine, if no qualifying upset bid is received after the initial public notice, the offer set forth above is hereby accepted. The appropriate Craven County Board of Education officials are authorized to execute the instruments necessary to convey the property to Dave Vincent. Adopted March 20th, 2025. Signed, Craven County Board of Education.
I would entertain a motion to accept the resolution as presented by Ms. Dacey.
So moved.
I have, do I have a second to accept the resolution as presented by Ms. Dacey?
Second.
And I have a second from Ms. Kitzinger. Dr. Miller, would you take a roll call vote, please?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason? Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is to approve our meeting minutes. We are going to, we have minutes from four of our regular meetings, two work sessions and two, our board retreat that was held in January, and the board minutes from the regular meeting in January. We had inclement weather for the February board meeting, so there are not regular meeting minutes for that. I would entertain a motion to accept the minute, the regular minutes as presented?
So moved.
Do I have a second to accept the regular minutes? And I have a second from Ms. Gibbs. Next, I, oh, I'm sorry. Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
I'll be happy to. And this is on the regular meeting minutes. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason? Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Next, I would entertain a motion to accept the closed session meeting minutes from February 18th as presented.
So moved.
Have a motion to do that? Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Ms. Kitzinger. Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
And this is for the closed session minutes. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason? Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The next item on the agenda is to accept Policy 5022, which is the Registered Sex Offenders Policy. We've reviewed this in the work session. We've had a first reading and a second reading and made some modifications to it. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a first and a second. First for Ms. Dacey to accept the consent agenda, second for Ms. Mason. And would you like, please take a roll call vote, Dr. Miller.
And this is on the consent agenda item with the policy. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason? Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And we modified the agenda at the beginning to add one other item, and that is the discussion of the ESS contract. So in the work session, we had a presentation from our HR director and the ESS vendors. ESS is the contractor, the staffing service that we have been using this past year to place our substitutes. And the motion that I would entertain tonight is to change the, is to modify a clause in the contract. So the original contract is slated so that it would automatically renew. And we don't really know yet, but we have gotten some very positive feedback on the ESS service. But we're nine months into it or six months into it. And in just the interest of being good stewards, we would like to make sure that we are not on the hook for an automatic renewal of a four-year contract. So I'm going to let Ms. Mason read that motion.
Make a motion to direct the superintendent to provide ESS Southeast LLC written notice of termination of the July 23rd, '24 contract so as to prevent any automatic renewals under the contract and invite them to make a contract offer for the next fiscal school year.
Yes.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to modify the ESS contract. Is there any discussion?
Just to clarify, modify the contract?
Based on that motion?
Terminate the contract.
To terminate it and?
The contract and invite them to make another proposal.
Yes, that's a one-year proposal.
That would be my recommendation.
Yes. We will take the motion wording from Mr. Gatchell, which we have written. We have.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are we going to do an RFP for the other company or anything in the meantime? Or do we want to just hear what they have to say when they come back?
Yes, Ms. Dacey?
Well, my understanding was that there really isn't a competitor that is somebody we're interested in working with, so.
I would hope, I would hope not. I mean, I'm not interested in that, but I know that, you know, the other day, there was some discussion from other board members that they wanted to feel out other vendors. But as they said the other day that there's only one, I think it was called Kelly or something like that. But I don't think that they're.
Yes, Dr. Miller?
We actually received an hour or so ago and a recommended addendum from them, but certainly I will follow the direction of the board and terminate the contract. But they have made an offer regarding pricing for next year at a better rate. And they have also made an offer effective the 20th for a 60-day termination rather than the current one. But I will do as direct and terminate that. But they've already made one offer, so we will continue to try to negotiate with them.
Thank you. So I have a first and a second. And any other discussion? Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote?
So I want to make sure that, you know, the wording is right. We are terminating the ESS contract, but certainly we'll see if they have a counter offer. But we're going to send a termination letter. Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger?
Yes.
Ms. Patty Mason? Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
I would enter, I would entertain a motion to enter into closed session to pursue it to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3 and A6 to consult with an attorney in order to protect the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body and to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, or condition of appointment of a public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. Among other matters, the board expects to receive legal advice regarding the existing lawsuits KL by and through, KB and CB versus Craven County Board of Education, 24 EDC 04447, and CL by and through KB and CB versus Craven County Board of Education, 24 EDC 04445.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, and we are now in.
Do you want to vote for that, Madam Chair?
Yes. Dr. Miller, would you please take a roll call vote for us to go into closed session?
Ms. Jennifer Dacey?
Yes.
Ms. Amy Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Darlene Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Lee Kurtman?
Yes.
Ms. Lauren Kitzinger? Ms. Patty Mason?
Yes.
Ms. Lori Spees?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
The board has come out of closed session and we took the following actions. Petitioners agreed to release, we approved two settlements in closed session. Petitioners agreed to release all claims against the Craven County Board of Education that were brought or could have been brought pursuant to the IDEA and North Carolina Special Education statutes in exchange for non-monetary terms and payment of $15,500 in KL by and through KB and CB versus Craven County Board of Education 24 EDC 04447. And petitioners agreed to release all claims against the Craven County Board of Education that were brought or could have been brought pursuant to the IDEA and North Carolina Special Education statutes in exchange for non-monetary terms and payment of up to $15,500 in and CL by and through KB and CB versus Craven County Board of Education 24 EDC 04445. The board also reviewed Human Resources Report 9A and at this time I would entertain a motion to accept that report.
Motion.
Do I have a second to report Human Resources Report 9A?
Second.
Ms. Neldor, would you please take a roll call vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you. That is, that is all of our business for this evening and I need to take a, I would entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Do you all have a second?
Second.
And all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Meeting is adjourned.